I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to an order, to order determination of a quorum, please.
Sarah Savileczek, here. Larry Chesney.
Here.
James Barnes.
Here.
Thomas Bruce.
Here.
Francine Doncic.
Here.
Philip Haran.
Present.
Kate Nelson.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Nat, if Commissioner Nelson could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Edwards, the Ethics Announcement, please.
Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the Commission today, one, you have received a gift or loan; two, you have a pecuniary interest; three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship; or four, you provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter being considered tonight, then you must disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And you must furthermore abstain from deliberation or voting on a matter if it is clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you have had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the Commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting.
Thank you. The Appeal Process, Mr. Lloyd.
Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within ten calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or the Secretary of the Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the Planning Staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal, procedure, and application fee.
Thank you. We're now at General Public Comment. Before we begin with Public Comment, I'm just asking the audiences to remember that we have an expectation, this Commission has an expectation of respect and decorum through the whole process. So, everybody will be heard this evening, but be mindful of making sure that every voice gets to be heard, and that if you disagree with a position, that you quietly keep that opinion to yourself. We have one public hearing item this evening, and so I know that everyone will be on their best behavior, but I'm just asking to remember that this is what this Commission expects. And I also want to welcome our newest Commissioner, baptism by fire. So, welcome.
Thank you.
So, we'll open up for General Public Comment for this side.
Madam Chair, can I add a couple of things?
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think it's probably worth pointing out as well, just because of the size of the crowd tonight, that the General Public Comment period is in addition to the comment that's going to be taken in connection with the major hearing item that's on there tonight. So, there will be additional comment then. And I heard a reference that you made a moment ago to differences of opinion and things like that, and I just want the, for the record, it to be clear that, you know, Public Comment doesn't require anybody not to express differences of opinion.
Exactly.
And the standard that you and I talked about today is, is conduct shouldn't disrupt the meeting and make its orderly conduct impractical.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Edwards. Okay.
Russell Earl, followed by Charles Moore.
Good evening, folks. This has been a long and arduous process. My name is Russ Earl. I represent the Silver Knowles Community Organization. This has been going on for quite a few years now. Negotiations with the listeners started back, about 2005, for their first iteration. So, we're now where we are, and I had submitted a number of documents for your review. I hope you've taken the time to look at them. First off was a four-page letter from the community organization. It was posted to your website. It was given to your secretary. Second is a traffic analysis conducted by Community Environmental Defense Services, a Mr. Richard Klein out of Owings Mills, Maryland. It looks at their traffic study and analyzes that, and basically picks apart how this will not work. The traffic, even if we went the four lanes on Red Rock Road, would put us at a sub-level F at times, which is not compatible with county standards. The last thing that I submitted to you folks was a petition, actually two. There was a first version, and I told people that had signed that one, they were not allowed to sign the second one. But this has gone through so many iterations, and number of houses up, down, up, and we're back to 1872. So, we had 473 signatures of residents in Silver Knowles and Red Rock that were in opposition to this development. Couple other things I'd like to, other than the traffic issues, you know, the impact fees of approximately $4,000 per house don't even come close to covering the multi-millions of dollars that it would take to expand Red Rock Road. So, that comes out of other coffers and tax money from the county to be put towards something so that the developer can make a lot of money, and only those people that use that road, which are basically his additional residents, get to benefit from. So, I don't think it's fair to the rest of the residents of the county. Other issues I had, I was a professional firefighter in the city of Oakland for 15 years. I'm quite familiar with wildland interface fires. I brought this issue up to the Commissioners and the Planning Commission before. We, at this current time, really don't have adequate fire suppression and police services or county sheriff services out in our neck of the woods as it is. To add, almost 1,900 homes is just indescribably a bad idea. We live in the urban wildland interface. Some of the, in his plan, he shows that there may be as many as seven to 10 homes per acre. We're emulating Coffee Park in Santa Rosa. That was an area that was deemed to never be burnable, but yet they lost 5,500 homes, and they had far more resources to fight that fire than we do. Just a year, two years ago, we had the fire that burned over 2,500 acres in three hours, and we did not have an evacuation route. Imagine 2,000 more homes and maybe 6,000 more vehicles trying to flee that area. Thank you for your time. I hope you look at this carefully and vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Moore, followed by Denise Ross.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Charles Moore, Fire Chief for Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. The Board of Fire Commissioners have tasked me with looking at our service levels and how we deploy our resources. It's interesting to note that 75% of our calls occur north of 395 and 25% occur in the south part of our district. Consequently, we have one more station in the south than we do in the north. So, the Board has tasked me with trying to realign our resources to where they're needed most, and that's in the north where we see a lot of growth. We have a plan to do that. We're going to present it to the Board of Fire Commissioners very soon, but I would, I would offer up that fire protection should be the least of your concerns as you deliberate this. I'd be glad to stay in the audience if you have questions during your deliberations, but nevertheless, I can unfold some of those details for you if you're interested.
Yes.
And with respect to what could be contemplated in a new response model is that we would look at the Silver Lake Volunteer Station becoming a career station, and reducing response times from what are now eight to nine minutes, to 10 minutes, to somewhere around one or two minutes. I would also say that Mr. Listener has been very responsive and has engaged the Fire District in many discussions about fire protection, and so I would offer up that he's been very, very engaged in that. So, if I can offer any additional input to you during the course of the meeting, I will be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Denise Ross.
Good afternoon. Sorry, we ran from the other meeting. If I repeat anything that was already said, I'm sorry. I just wanted to remind everybody, and just consider yourself, all of our ditches and roadways are overgrown out there. The air pollution is on the increase. You guys are going to be losing your federal funding if it continues. The roads are graded D to F. There's no sewer capacity. That's an issue that we don't need to keep going over and over again, but it's something that still needs to be considered. A fire chief stopped at our most recent NAB meeting. He represented Station 9 and 10, and some of the statistics that he stated were that they received 125 calls per day. In the past 21 years, they've only hired two more people, and they weren't firemen. In 21 years for our area, that's kind of scary. There's 213 firefighters. They receive 47,000 calls a year. It equals to about 200 calls per firefighter. Whenever you've got these wildfires that are going now, like in Paradise and Reading, and how quickly all of the elements turn on you, I think the fire department and firefighting is critical. And we keep saying that, oh, somebody will put in a new firehouse, they'll help build a new school. There are no teachers. We have substitute teachers running our schools now. There are no firemen, really, to continually man the new fire stations, and that all comes back on the backs of all of the tax, all of the residents. We need to slow things down, get a grip, get our infrastructure solid, then move forward. And I know the moratorium thing didn't go, but still, let's think about what we're doing and slow things down a little bit here at your level, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further public comment.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the Board for action to approve the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we may have more public comment.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Wendy Baroli, and although I work with Peter Listener in Lifestyle Homes, I wish for my comments to be a reflection of my opinion and not those of Lifestyle Homes. I'm a fourth-generation Reno, Nevada, and my great-grandparents on both sides are immigrants, and they came here for a chance for a better life in this country. Much like our own Edon that looks to the westward expansion to grow our nation, we are growing northern Nevada as we are ensuring good-paying jobs and healthy communities for our families to thrive in. I live and work in the region, and I grew up in the North Valleys. We wax poetic about the American dream, but it's often lost in process. In this instance, a planning that has quickly outgrown its origins. You, as Commissioners, make decisions based on legal challenges of planning, but in the end, you are the ones who make those communities. You guys are the ones who make those dreams happen. In 1980, Washoe County's population was around 193,000. In 2019, it's 319,000, and of that number, 96,000 are children below the age of 18. These children deserve to live in homes that are based on standards of community. The city of Reno in 1980 went online. A Chevy pickup was around $7,000, and the most popular car was a Ford Escort or Honda Accord. Today, we are an internet society. We're all connected. There are 20 electric cars available, 10 of them manufactured in our state. And why is this important to note? It speaks directly to the outdated Character Management Plan statement. We do not drive Ford Escorts, and cars cost around $27,000. Mobile phones now are handheld computers. This is why this process is in place, to amend the master plan, why it is arduous, costly, and requires detailed justification. It is to provide an avenue, not to subvert the existing rules, but to take into consideration the protocol of an existing plan that no longer serves the greater good of the population and tax-paying citizens. No one could foresee the economic crisis of 2008 that went on for 18 months, and certainly couldn't understand the next four years as we continued to recover. No one now could imagine the population growth of over 126,000 more people in Washoe County. Edon and our local state government did its job. They used our taxes to encourage job growth and pull northern Nevada into the future, but we now have a reverse crisis in the making. The lack of housing could drastically change our economic growth. As Planning Commissioners, you are the legal mechanism to remedy and ensure good planning meets the long-term region's growth. It's why it's called an amendment, because there are unknowable things to the foreseeable future. You are in a watershed moment representing the future of our city and council. You are the voice to the people who do not have a voice because they don't own a home. You are the ones who can speak through planning, whether they will have the opportunity to live in a walkable community, where that provides resources like a DMV, or satellite post office, or a health clinic. You are the ones who can help us get to the place where we can design town centers so that they can go to places to walk in their community rather than get in a car and drive to Reno for a quality of life. That's all my time now. Thank you, Commissioners. I will continue my comments on the agenda item.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
No further that I'm aware of. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment during this period?
Okay, thank you. All right. Ma'am, you need to come forward. Okay, so for clarification, this is General Public Comment. Is there anyone wishing to make General Public Comment? Okay, now I'm going to try this again. Possible action to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I'm going to approve the agenda.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Chesney, seconded by Commissioner Doncic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, to approve June 4th draft minutes and amended May 7th. So, we'll do the June 4th minutes? First.
Move to approve the minutes, June 4th minutes.
I second.
Okay. Go on, Francine.
All right. I'm going to say it was moved by Commissioner Doncic and seconded by Commissioner Chesney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The amended May 7th meeting minutes, draft minutes, the joint meeting.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the amended meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Doncic and seconded by Commissioner Chesney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're now on to our public hearing item. I'll open the public hearing. Call for the agenda item, Mr. Lloyd.
Please bear with me.
All right. Certainly.
Master Plan Amendment, case number WMPA 170010, Silver Hills. For possible action, hearing, and discussion to amend the Washoe County Master Plan, North Valley's Area Plan, including: 1. Remove four parcels of land totaling 780 acres from the Silver Knowles Suburban Character Management Area; 2. Create a Silver Hills Suburban Character Management Area and add four parcels of land totaling 780 acres to the SHS CMA; 3. Amend the North Valley's Area Plan Character Management Area map to reflect the removal of four parcels of land totaling 780 acres from the SKS CMA and into the SHS CMA; 4. Create a character statement for the SHS CMA; 5. Create a new land use policy NV.1.8 to allow the following regulatory zones in the SHS CMA: A. Public (semi-public) facilities; B. Low-density suburban (one unit per acre); C. Low-density suburban (two units per acre); D. Medium-density suburban (three, three units per acre); E. Parks and Recreation; E, I'm sorry, F. Open space; G. Neighborhood Commercial; H. Specific Plan; 6. Create a new Goal 7 within the North Valley's Area Plan for the proposed SHS CMA to establish a land use pattern, site development guidelines, and architectural guidelines that will implement and preserve the Silver Hills community character as described in the North Valley's Vision and Character Statement as they are proposed to be amended; 7. Renumber the remainder of the North Valley's Area Plan to allow the insertion of a new Goal 7; 8. To create NV.7.1 to require at least 50% of the residential parcels located to the east of Red Rock Road and within the SHS CMA are at least one acre in size; 9. Create policy NV.7.2 to create a minimum lot size of 1/2 acre for residential parcels located to the east of Red Rock Road and within the SHS CMA, and to allow a residential density of three dwellings to the acre for the area of the SHS CMA located to the west of Red Rock Road; 10. Create policy NV.7.3 to require new subdivision established within the SHS CMA to include an open space buffer of at least 50 feet in width adjacent to any dwellings existing prior to the adoption of the SHS CMA, and to require that all new parcels within 200 feet of the existing parcels match the size of the existing parcels; 11. Create policies NV.7.4 through NV.7.11 to establish development standards within the SHS CMA similar to policies NV.4.6 through NV.4.10 from the SKS CMA, including varied building setbacks, varied architectural elevations, open fencing, minimum two-car residential garages, dark-skY exterior lighting, new dwellings located adjacent to existing dwellings to the, to be single-story in height, landscaping that emphasizes native vegetation, and implementation of these standards through actions by Washoe County, and Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA 170005, for possible action, hearing, and discussion to amend the regulatory zone on four parcels of land totaling 780 acres from low-density suburban to specific plan with the intent of approving a specific plan allowing the development of 1,872 dwelling units. The overall residential density request is approximately 2.4 dwelling units to the acre. The development pattern proposed is similar to a common open space subdivision with lots as small as 3,700 square feet on the west side of Red Rock Road, and lots as small as 1/2 acre on the east side of Red Rock Road. The specific plan also provides for a total of 4,500, I'm sorry, 45,000 square feet of floor area for commercial uses, and 15 acres for personal storage, and 15 acres for storage of operable vehicle use types. Here representing Washoe County is Senior Planner Roger Pelham.
Thank you. Disclosures by Commissioners, either ethics or ex parte communications. I will start. I was on this North Valley Citizens Advisory Board and Chair of the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board when Bob Listener came to the community of Silver Knowles and invited me to, well, I was invited by Commissioner Weber at the time, to sit in on those meetings as the Chair of the CAB. Since being appointed to the Planning Commission, I have not had any interactions with the group regarding any new development for Silver Hills. I detached myself from that when I was appointed to the Planning Commission. So, that is my disclosure. Mr. Edwards.
I don't hear anything in that that would require a recusal on your part. And as these disclosures are made, I think, you know, some common ones to bear in mind for something like this, you know, a project of this size would be, you know, ownership of property that's nearby, you know, the project site, or in an area that might be affected by, you know, new roads being built or something like that. That might be a pecuniary interest issue, depending on the level of the impact.
I do live in Silver Knowles.
Okay. And so, and I'm glad you brought that up, and what, what is your proximity to where this area would be?
Well, where the development is, there's quite a buffer of houses between me and my, and between my property and where this new development will go.
Okay, so you wouldn't be, you're not in the property that's like right next to?
No, I am not.
Okay. And you're not on any streets that are being served by, or new streets that are going to be built or improved in your subdivision because of this, if this were approved?
No.
All right. So, I'm glad you raised that. I don't think that, that, I don't think that rises to the level of a particular interest one way or the other with respect to a project, over and above what the, the general population has in that area, and a lot of the people here tonight are from that area, that have opinions one way or the other on it. I think you're more appropriately categorized as someone who's in that larger category of, of the general public in the area that's, that will be affected by this, but not in some demonstrable, particular, pecuniary way with respect to your, to the project. The last question I would have is, subjectively, do you feel there's any reason that you can't be impartial in hearing this item, having made those disclosures?
None at all.
Okay. And, and, you know, the way the ethics law works is the disclosures are a lower standard and recusal is a higher standard, and the general legal standard is that public body members should not be forced to recuse themselves because there's value in the appointed members of a public body being able to carry out their duties. And that, that has value to the community. It has value because of their expertise and their experience and their familiarity with neighborhoods and things like that. So, the ethics law has a two-pronged set of standards. Like I said, the lower for disclosure, which you've already done, and the higher one for recusal. In my opinion, I don't think you, you meet the recusal standard, the higher recusal standard under the law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other disclosures? Commissioner Doncic.
Just for the record, I was also a member of the Citizen Advisory Board at the same time that some of this, the original discussions were, were going on.
And same comments I had for Chair Savileczek.
Commissioner Bruce.
I think it's on. Anyway, I did attend the CAB meeting in June to listen. I made no comments and spoke with no one other than saying hi or "nice to be here." Just so everybody knows, I was there.
Thank you, Commissioner. The issue with something like that would be whether or not there were any commitments made by you with respect to the outcome tonight in, in attending a meeting like that. It doesn't sound like there were, and for everyone else as well, that would be a common issue with that type of thing. And I know all of you have gone through training, and you all have experience doing this, and so that would be unlikely, but that's, that's one of the big issues with that type of interaction. I don't hear anything problematic with that. Thank you.
Any other disclosures?
I've received multiple emails.
We all have, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Pelham.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. For the record, Roger Pelham with Washoe County.
Oh, excuse me. Before you begin, I've been asked by fellow Commissioners that if you're referencing any particular point in this document, if you reference what page number, please.
Yes. During my presentation, I will not be referencing the attachments.
Okay.
I will only be referencing the staff report, which is about 60 pages, I'm afraid.
Commissioner Haran thanks you.
So, with that, let me start by simply saying this is going to be a very high-level, very fast overview. The particular analysis, again, is included in that 60-page document that you've all been provided, and I trust that you've all read that and, and begun familiar with it. So, to begin, this is a request for both a change to the master plan and to the regulatory zone on the four parcels in question. Those have been read into the record by the Planning Managers, so I'm not going to bore you by reading those again. This is the vicinity map, the project site, or the subject site, I should say, is, they're outlined in red, that is Red Rock Road there, running north from 395. By way of background, a tentative subdivision map was approved on this same site back in 2011, and allows for 680 dwelling units. That is still in effect at this time. You might question, why is it that we have 2017 amendments that are coming forward now in 2019? Well, the fact is that this has been amended a number of times. Again, that has been shown in the staff report. Those amendments, well, it was originally submitted in September of '17, then March of '18, July of '18, February of '19, and then May of '19. And again, this current version, which really only had a few minor amendments to their proposed Development Standards Handbook, was June of this year. More detail, pages nine and 10. And what I'd like to point out is, on each one of my slides, you're going to see page or page numbers down at the bottom, typically in bold. That is going to refer you to that staff report where greater detail is, is located. This is the land use plan that is proposed by the applicant. Now, this is meant to be done by means of implementation of a specific plan. That implementation requires a number of changes to the master plan to start, and then the change to the zoning to specific plan, and then with that, the adoption of the Development Standards Handbook. What this would allow is essentially three dwelling units to the acre in the lighter yellow areas surrounded by the open space, which has some green there, on the west side, and on the east side, essentially one dwelling unit to the acre. My evaluation, again, is extensive. It's 60 pages worth, but there are a number of documents we have to compare to. The first is the existing master plan, I'm sorry, the first is actually the regional plan, then the master plan, then the development code, and then other general legal principles that may apply. And again, there's a substantial section of, of my report that is dedicated to that. I am going to hit one piece of each one of those levels of evaluation, the first one being the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. This, the applicant seeks to transfer density This, the applicant seeks to transfer density from slopes that are greater than 30% to areas that are less than 30%. Areas with slopes greater than 30% are defined as development constraints areas. That is not allowed under the regional plan, therefore, it is my opinion that this is contrary to at least that one aspect of the regional plan. Next, like to move down one level to the master plan, most particularly the North Valley's Area Plan. And again, this is one. And again, there are other elements of the master plan that apply. And this is that the North Valley's Area Plan identifies the character management areas that exist. This was a citizen-based effort, there were lots of folks involved, and particular areas were identified. The area in the subject site, I should say, in question this evening is part of the Silver Knowles Suburban Character Management Area. Just in very shorthand, the applicant seeks to remove it from the Silver Knowles Suburban Character Management Area and to create a new Silver Hills Suburban Character Management Area. Because the area plan has identified the character management areas to be just that list, those ones that have been identified when this plan was adopted, taking that out, creating a new one, is contrary to, again, the existing master plan. And again, greater, greater detail included in the staff report. I'd like to, again, step down one more level, and, oh wait, no, I'm sorry, this is also the master plan. One of the things is, that's rather important in the Silver Knowles Character Management Area, is that the development pattern be essentially lot sizes, minimum of 1 half acre. That is sort of consistent with the development pattern in the, in the area at this time. Maybe those areas actually are even larger than that. The development pattern requested would allow, again, on the west side, lots as small as 3,700 square feet. So you're looking at a development pattern that could be as much as 10 dwelling units to the acre, again, offset by open space. Okay, Washoe County Development Code. Within the Development Standards Handbook itself, there are a number of references to administrative review, that certain things would be allowed given an administrative review. That's not a process we have. We have one particular type of administrative review, it's called a detached accessory dwelling administrative review, but there is no such sort of broad thing where county staff can just look at something and sort of say, yeah, we think that's a good idea, or that's a bad idea. We have to have findings, we have to have standards by which to measure it. And in fact, our code says if we look at a use and it's not included in the code, it's actually prohibited. So again, the application, I believe, is contradictory to the development code. I'd like to talk about general legal framework, spot zoning. Now, spot zoning is when you take one piece of land and it has a designation that is different than the surrounding area. That's not always inappropriate. A school, for example, might be public and semi-public facilities surrounded by residential. That's actually appropriate. Spot zoning is found to be invalid when it allows a benefit to a particular property owner that is inconsistent with the limitations on the surrounding property owners. Again, there's a couple of pages, we were given some, some advice and some guidance by the District Attorney's Office, and it is possible that approval of this specific plan could constitute improper spot zoning. This was heard, and so now I'm going to go into sort of the public process, a number of the meetings that we've had. The Citizen Advisory Board did hear this on several occasions, again, there were several iterations. I attended all of those meetings, and I think I can say that there was no support expressed by the residents in the surrounding area. The response was really that the existing development pattern should be maintained. There was criticism raised at one point that the North Valley's Area Plan requires visioning workshops, and while I think probably the Citizen Advisory Boards did that, we had, because of that criticism, we had three specific meetings within one week. This statement is included on page 38 of your staff report, and that is the result of those three days. And the result is essentially, the people that are in that area like the area plan as it exists today. Public notice was provided to 173 parcels within 750 feet, where required to have a minimum of 30 individual property owners, and we have exceeded that. Now I'd like to get into the findings of fact, those bases that you use for making your decision. And what I've tried to do, to try to make this a little quicker, is I've coded these like a stoplight. If they're red, I'm saying that I don't believe that that finding can be made. Yellow, might be, that, you know, you might want to look carefully at that one, and green, I believe that it can be made. So let's start getting through these as quickly as we can. There are three required of the six under Article 820, and all 12 under the North Valley's Area Plan. Consistency with the master plan, I talked about one or two elements of that. It's my opinion that, that this application is inconsistent with the population element goal four, population 4.1, conservation element goal two, land use and transportation element policies, loot 1.1, 1.2, 3.1, 5.1, 5.7, and I won't read the rest of those. You will see those numbers occur several times, unless you'd really like me to. Good, I'll keep going. Compatible land uses, again, the overall development pattern would allow lots as small as 3,700 square feet in an area where the predominant pattern is really half acre and larger. That is, in my opinion, inconsistent. Response to change conditions, the applicant sort of cites growth within the sort of the stead area as needing additional housing in this area. No further studies have been submitted, there has been nothing else submitted done by the county that indicates that there have been specific changes to that area, the conditions remain more or less as they were when this plan was adopted. During the public review, the folks in that area pretty much expressed that this did not, was not a more desirable utilization of land. Again, availability of facilities, facilities will have to be extended and improved to serve any new development in this area. Desired pattern of growth, that is subjective. The folks in that area have expressed that, no, this is not the desired pattern, obviously the applicant feels that it is. There is no military installation in the area in, under the North Valley's Area Plan. I don't believe that this will further implement and preserve the vision and character statement. In fact, they have to write a new vision and character statement, and that's why those three visionings, the series of visioning workshops were required. Does this apply to all the applicable policies of the North Valley's Area Plan and the master plan? No, I don't believe that it does, and again, I have that list of policies there, and again, in the staff report. Will not conflict with the public's health, safety, and welfare. Again, at this time, there is insufficient infrastructure. The water service is envisioned to come from Tumwa, but there's no source identified at this point. Sheriff's Office commented that there will be a reduction in service in that area, and this would, if approved, create enough students that it would push some of the schools to above 100% capacity. Feasibility study has been conducted, and yes, and that is in there, and there is more analysis, but again, our water rights, planning manager, water, pardon me, I have to slow down. Water Management Planner Coordinator notes that, again, a sustainable source has not been identified for provision for that area. Traffic study, again, it's not, to be approved under the North Valley's Area Plan, it can't be reduced to below policy level. The traffic study shows that, in fact, some of those segments and intersections would be reduced to below service level of capacity, which is C. Now that's actually a higher standard, where D is in most of the county, North Valley's Area Plan calls for C. The scale of commercial, is that intended really to be primarily community-serving? Yes, I think that an argument can be made there. On the other hand, the folks that were in that area said we have enough access to commercial, but the commercial is really proposed to be interior to development if it is approved. This will not go beyond the policy number of units. And again, if this will create a policy, the traffic going below the policy level of service, is the improvements within a, within a capital improvement plan? No, they are not. And this is not applicable because the roads are in fact operating at policy level of service at this point. And again, this is to ensure that long-range plans provide for transportation, water, schools parked, parks within that policy growth level, and again, if this number of dwelling units is approved, it will drop several of those below their policy levels, and again, take some of the schools to above 100% capacity. And again, same thing, schools, I apologize. We had no comments from any operators of special use permits in the area saying that this would be detrimental to them, so that finding can be made. And I am now to the regulatory zone amendment findings, and if I can have two minutes.
Okay, how about five?
What I was going to say is this, a regulatory zone amendment, of course, can't be approved unless it is preceded by the master plan amendment. I don't believe that the findings can be made for the master plan amendment, and therefore this, this might be a bit of a, sort of a redundant exercise, but we can go ahead and go through these again. I don't believe that this is consistent with the master plan. This, again, provides for a development pattern that is substantially different than the existing development pattern. There are no new studies that we are respons-
Backup power.
I apologize, I almost made it through before I did that. I apologize, my thumb is bigger than this button, so it's.
So you turn it off, is what you-
I did, it's right next to the forward button, so, sorry.
It's going to be under DRZA, it's probably six or eight from the end.
Yep, it's 50.
All right, there we go. Thank you very much. Specific plan is not an allowed regulatory zone within the master plans that exist today. There have been no changes that rise to the level of the change of the, within the master plan. Available facilities are really not in place at this time. Adverse effect, yes, I believe that it would adversely affect the implementation of the policies, again, those ones that I've listed, and it is inconsistent with those, again, listed here. Desired pattern of growth, again, that's something that is subjective, that you can sort of look at and see, but again, the opinion generally expressed by the folks in that area is that it is not, no military installation in the area. And then we have a set of findings necessary for implementation of a specific plan itself. And I'm going to concentrate on this one just a little bit. The reason for a specific plan is really stated to better and more, for better and more comprehensive implementation of the goals and policies of the master plan. And again, in this case, it is my opinion that this does not, in fact, implement the goals of the master plan, or at least does not implement the preponderance of the goals of the master plan. Is the departure from the regulatory zone in the public interest? Again, in all cases, this varies towards a more intense rather than a less intense use in that area. The ratio of residential to non-residential, the commercial area within the proposed specific plan is, you know, really relatively small.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I apologize. Thank you, Katie. Is there adequate common open space proposed? Would be about 3,500 square feet per dwelling unit, and within that open space, again, as shown in the, in the staff report, there are a number of uses proposed by the applicant, things like barns and gardens and things of that nature. This is a little bit atypical. A far more typical use of open space would be things like trails, passive recreation, that sort of thing. So this is probably, again, a more intense use, not unheard of, but more intense than Again, maintenance of common open space, if there's, if this is approved, there would be an HOA and they would do that. Again, adequacy of public facilities, services, traffic amenities, I think we've talked about that one. Relationship to the neighborhood. Now, there are buffers and lot matching proposed between the specific plan and the existing surrounding dwelling units, with the smaller units being located really central. So again, that is something that you might weigh, maybe, maybe not. There is no particular schedule called out in the application documents, so there's not a sufficient schedule to ensure that these things are done. Generally speaking, the applicant has expressed that probably this is a 15- to 20-year build-out. With that, I am recommending denial based on my evaluation of the master plan amendment with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, the Washoe County Master Plan, the Development Code, and general legal principles. With that, I am available for any questions you might have, and I apologize for the length of the presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have an applicant presentation? You will have 20 minutes as well, not to exceed.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Nice to see you, Commissioners. For the record, Garrett Gordon, today I had the pleasure of representing Lifestyle Homes. They've been building in Northern Nevada for over 30 years, and behind me are three generations of listeners, Peter Listner, son of Bob Listner, and Peter Listner's son, Dustin. They've built over 3,000 homes in Northern Nevada, employ 50 direct employees, and likely employ over hundreds of folks in Northern Nevada as they build homes. This is certainly not their first rodeo, they appreciate the ability and your time to be here today. As you know, we've been through a very arduous process over the last one to two years, and I think, fortunately, we have a little different story to tell today that hopefully allows you to make the findings. So number one, community outreach, this is very, very important. As you heard from Trevor, reading the, the description of our application, it's very complicated, but in fact, it's very well reasoned, and we took into account many, many comments we've heard from the neighbors, the residents, over the last one to two years. 10 to 12 meetings from private citizens, two meetings at the homeowner, at the homeowner association, another open house, four NAV meetings, which I know there was a couple disclosures that the Commissioners were there, and plus three visioning workshops. And that wasn't just going through the process to just go through the motions, we actually made substantive changes, as you could see in Roger's presentation, over the last one to two years, as a direct result of those comments. Number one is we reduced the density. We were up around 23, 2,340 units, we reduced that down to 1,872, including on the east side of Red Rock, committing to one unit per acre. That was big, we heard it, we kept it, and that's implemented into the plan. Two, and this is important for the findings that you'll hear in my later slides, we created a new Silver Hills Character Management Area. Why did we do that? Number one, we heard from the Silver Knowles residents, we don't want any changes to our area plan, and if we do make changes, we don't want a slippery slope. We do this for, we do this for Lifestyle Homes, who comes next? Lennar, who comes next? D O Horton? We like it as it is. So we said, well, let's pull our property out, and let's see if we can move forward And what did we do? We retained most goals and policy of the Silver Knolls. In your packet, you'll see a red line of the existing Silver Knolls plan and the Silver Hills plan. You can see they're very, very similar. We kept from dark skies, we kept from open fencing, we kept the garages. As much of the goals and policies that we could retain, we in fact did. And finally, a very stringent Silver Hills character management statement. I've appeared before this body in the past, before City of Reno, before City of Sparks, and this is the very first time I can say that very stringent, means-tested policies and requirements are actually put in our character statement. So no tentative map can ever be approved without complying with this master plan. No zone change, no final map. And if we ever wanted to change these very stringent character statements, provisions, we'd have to come back to this body and go to the board and go to Regional. So we're trying to put really teeth in our commitments, which in my experience, for doing this for 15 years, it's the first time. So we're here for findings. So there's really two buckets of findings. The first one is Washoe County Development Code, we have to make three of the six. So three out of substantial compliance with the master plan, compatible land uses, response to change conditions, availability of facilities that there are or are planned, and that's important, or are planned, facilities, a desired and pattern of growth, and effect on military installation. We can all agree, staff said, there's no effect on military installation. So legally speaking, you gotta find two out of the rest of the five, but we believe you can find six out of six. And also, North Valleys Area Plan findings, we'll go through that momentarily, but it's an important point for the first two, where it says, implement and preserve the character statement and conforms to the area plan. We're proposing new language, a new character statement and a new area plan. I believe the analysis by staff was circular in that they're saying we can't meet the master plan findings because we don't comply with the existing North Valleys Area Plan. But we're making, we've come up with additional language and additional character statement which should be applied against those top Development Code standards, one through six. So number one, and this is, I would argue, the framework of the North Valleys Area Plan. It's the number one policy. The combined growth level for the suburban character management area, all of North Valleys, 2,000 new residential land uses. It was stated that this community put together this North Valleys Area Plan, there was workshops held, they agreed, 2,000 units. Where would our number of units fall into this? Well, the net number of units we'd be adding is 1,092. 831 are left over. So let me repeat, we are far under the cap that's set in the North Valleys Area Plan that this community studied, that this body studied years ago, that staff studied. And there's room, we're not even pushing the limit of the 2,000. We're only at 831. So we believe that, yes, we're in compliance with the master plan, we're under that cap, and what's the desired and pattern of growth in North Valleys? It's 2,000 new units, and we're far way below that number. Number two, again, compliance with the master plan and desired pattern of growth, right? Two findings that have to be made. Master plan says you can have a maximum of five dwelling units per acre. Five. We're proposing 2.4, half of what's allowable in the master plan. And a maximum of three, but you take the net value or you take the net density and it's 2.4. So I would argue, are we in compliance with the master plan? Absolutely, we're only half of the density that the master plan would allow. Desired and pattern of growth, again, yes. Master plan says you can do five, we're half, again, working through compromises and concessions with the neighborhood. Compatible land uses. So here's a chart, you don't have to take my word for it, but here's a chart right from the Development Code that shows what is compatible. How do you tell if it's something that's compatible or not? Is it subjective or is it objective? So you'll see on this chart, on the top, it says LDS, one unit per acre existing. Compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood is high, medium, high, 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 high. So it sounded like from staff's presentation that what we were introducing was totally incompatible and no way and shape or form would fit into this neighborhood. But you can see here, specific plan, MDS compatibility rating, the exact same, high, high, medium, high, high, high. We're high compatibility of what we're proposing from, from the development, from the table right from the Development Code. So we think we are compatible, can meet that finding pretty easily, given the code. And it shows down there, high compatibility. What does that really mean? Little or no screening or buffering necessary. But we went beyond that, right? We actually came up with, in response to the neighbors, both buffering and the density, both open space buffer and the density buffer. So despite having a high compatibility rating, you can see in our land use plan, next to the adjacent neighbors on the east side, we have a 50-foot open space buffer and an additional 200-foot matching density buffer, acre to an acre, half acre to a half acre. So there's 250-foot buffer to ensure that we made that compatibility finding. So we think we satisfy that, and I think came up with a pretty good plan for the buffering. Response to change conditions. So I know staff had mentioned that there wasn't any reports submitted, but we did commission, and this report was submitted and it's on the record, an economic development report that looked at the fiscal impact of our development, the commercial space for the development, and that's a finding in the North Valleys Area Plan, and we have to show there's a need for community-serving commercial. And three, a resident income analysis. So what does this mean? Why is Lifestyle Homes spending a year and a half of their time and effort and money and studies and neighborhood meetings? Because they believe that the circumstances have changed out there and there's a need for this missing middle housing. So for the report, you can hear, Lifestyle Homes is currently developing Woodland Village. The Woodland Village currently has an average of 1,900 square feet, average sales price is around $340,000. The price is significantly lower than the median price for new homes in the region, which is over $500,000. It is well-known that Reno-Sparks housing market experienced high levels of growth in the last year, especially as measured by housing prices. So what does that mean? The analysis, our analysis indicates that Silver Hills Development will provide much-needed lower-priced housing with average home prices below the new and existing single-family home prices in the region. These homes will be priced slightly above homes affordable by families earning median wages in the region, attracting the type of workforce employees valuable to the region such as police officers, nurses, librarians, accountants, and other occupations. That additional density that we have allows us to build smaller lots, make them more affordable, and to pick up this missing middle that's desperately needed. So we have a report on the record that I think specifically addresses the changed circumstances that we're dealing with. Development feasibility. So here's, here is part of that analysis as well of what's this gonna cost the county? They're gonna make money, they're gonna lose money, we hear development doesn't pay for itself, residential doesn't pay for itself. So with our mixed-use development, we show revenues over $68 million, certainly there's costs over 60, and there's a net revenue surplus of over $7 million, with over $34 million going toward public safety. This development more than pays for itself, and we believe is very fiscally responsible and a compromise in moving this forward. Availability of planned facilities. So I'm gonna touch on this a couple times, but here is our proposed new character statement. And I'll touch on the whole paragraph later in my presentation, but what is it talk to about availability of planned facilities? My take was staff's recommendation, it was based on public facilities and planned facilities. So I have three or four slides to address it. What are we putting into the character statement? We are agreeing that we have to improve fire and police protection in the area. You heard from the fire a minute ago, and they don't have any concerns with this development. We met the sheriff's office today and are coming close to working out an agreement where they won't have any concerns moving forward. But not only you have to take my word for it, it's actually in there, that we have to not just maintain but improve fire and police protection, that's for not only our specific plan, but if we brought a tentative map before you. Any commissioner can ask me or our engineer, how'd you improve fire and police? We'd have to tell you, we improved it, or else you could deny it. Number two, have you provided support to the Silver Knolls Mutual Water Company customers? That was a direct comment from the visioning workshop, we put it into our character statement. And we have to say, yeah, we provided support, and here's how. Also, we have to design the sanitary sewer and stormwater systems to maintain levels that are at or below pre-development flows in Swan and Silver Lakes. Every development, every development within this character management area, every tentative map is gonna have to prove to staff and prove to you and prove to the board that we are maintaining or below, there is no net increase, there is no negative impact to those two lakes. That's in the master plan, and if we ever wanted to change it, we'd have to go through this huge master plan amendment again, which takes, as you heard, years. So it's in there, we're putting some teeth into actually what we're saying. Specific plan. So why did we go specific plan? So, again, my experience, master, specific plans, planning unit developments, why do you do those? Why don't you just go to strict zoning? Because you can condition it. And pardon my French, but you can condition the hell out of us with specific plans. You can put in there exactly what you want, when you want it, and how you want it. You can add conditions, you can mitigate impacts. So why are we using a specific plan? There is greater, and this is right from county code, there is greater flexibility shall be utilized to create a coordinated development that provides public benefits that are not likely to be available through standard development process. We can condition ourselves on stormwater, we can condition ourselves on affluent, and not only condition ourselves, but we welcome conditions. And you'll see later in my presentation, we were frankly shocked that staff didn't ask us to commit to one condition or one mitigation. We thought there'd be a dialogue back and forth with regards to conditions or mitigations and how we're, how we're mitigating the impacts. So I welcome all of you today. If, in fact, you voted for this, what conditions would you like to see on our application? Right? What impacts are you hearing, and how can we mitigate it? Berms, trees, I mean, there's a, there's a litany of issues over the years that have been used to mitigate issues, and we are all ears, and the listeners who have been doing this for 30 years, I think I can go on the record to say, have never violated the condition while they've been doing business here. So if you put one on us, we'll comply with it. And next, particularly as they relate to sustainability, natural resources, and desired land patterns. So we have a specific plan that gives flexibility to allow us to deal with economic development, land use patterns, and conditions. So availability of planned facilities. So let's go through this, three slides. So there's really two findings, and I know staff focused on this, is availability of planned facilities, but there's also the other piece in the North Valleys Area Plan that says feasibility studies that identify improvements likely to be required to support intensification. You don't have to have the improvements on the books, or, excuse me, or shovel in the ground in order to support intensification. You have to talk about how they're being planned, and we have to do a study to show that they're feasible. So here's the example on stormwater. Wood Rogers did a feasibility study to show what our increase in volume is for stormwater. You can see the math there, it's 92 acre feet of excess, okay? What do we do with that? Well, we have a plan in the handbook, you can hold us to it, of detention ponds to mitigate that issue. And finally, how do we know that's gonna happen going forward? Well, there's also a condition that says we have to do a master hydrology study should be completed to make sure that plan, that schematic, in fact, works. So no tentative map will ever be approved unless that feasibility study can be verified, that pond schematic plan can be verified, our master hydrology study can be verified. If we can do all that, then we can move a tentative map forward. But we still have a lot of work to do, but again, there are specific criteria in the handbook, in the, in the specific plan, in order to get there. Water and affluent, same thing. We had a study for water, and there was a question in the staff report that we used the word "we envision" connecting to Tamoa. We submitted, and I was a little surprised, this wasn't mentioned in the, in the staff presentation, we resubmitted our specific plan that said "we shall." So we are 100% committing to Tamoa, there's three or four or five references in the staff report. Part of the reason for denial is says we use the word "envision," it's not "shall." That's been corrected, we shall connect to Tamoa. And also affluent, we've put some very hard and stringent standards on us about using affluent, and you can see in our reference to reducing future flood possibilities, and again, how those storage facilities would be used. Very stringent standards, we have the benefit of a specific plan, you can hold our feet to the fire with, with both of those facility and feasibility studies. And finally, roads. This was a big, I think, frankly, as I read it, maybe the biggest issue we saw in the staff report for the denial. And I think if we overcome this, then I think we got really a good argument that we met all the findings. And how are we gonna overcome this? Beyond a reasonable doubt, the level of service for transportation facilities, local transportation facilities in North Valleys Area Plan is level of service C. We cannot move forward with a tentative map if the, if the roads are a D or an E or an F. We can't. It's straight, it's clear. But what does this mean for us today? You look at the second sentence, it says, "All development proposals must demonstrate how the level of service will be maintained." So we don't have to say, there's no finding for you tonight to say, we have to have a level of service C on the books today in order to approve this development. But how are we gonna, how do we demonstrate we're maintaining it? Well, three reasons, three examples, three findings. RTC plan, Red Rock Road's already in the plan to be widened. I think I would be hard-pressed standing here before you today if that was not already in the plan, that it's being widened. And we have graphs and studies showing you're a, you're a D or an F with two lanes, and you get to a C with four lanes. How do you also contribute? We paying over $8 million in impact fees for improvement. That goes in the bucket to implement this plan. And finally, let's say, and again, this is a long build-out process, but let's say Lifestyle gets anxious and says, you know what, we're rocking and rolling here, we're selling homes, we wanna move forward with a map, and staff says, wait, no, you're only at, you're a D, you have to be a C. Number three, we can go build that improvement to get back to a C. We enter into an offset agreement with RTC, and in fact, can go build it to maintain a C. So we know we have to maintain a C to process a map. We have three examples how we're demonstrating, by the RTC plan, by the applicant contribution, and by the construction, of how we're demonstrating that in fact, we're gonna meet a C. So specific plan. So now I'm under the gun here a little bit, 50 seconds. So development occurs where infrastructure is available. Let's condition ourselves one more time. We're gonna condition ourselves to say, prior to approval of any Silver Hills tentative map, the applicant should prepare a facilities plan. So we'll do that in addition to everything else we've done before a tentative map. Couple corrections here that I think, again, get us over the goal line for the findings. Number one, Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, we fixed that issue three months ago, it was submitted to Roger, we're not counting development constraints against ourselves, it's on the record. Truckee Meadows Water Authority, we changed the word from "envision" to "shall." And there was a comment about Washoe County and schools, and you can see in this letter, it says, "Washoe County anticipates being able to meet the needs of this said development." That's a letter from Washoe County Schools, Washoe County Schools aren't a problem. Do I have another minute, Madam Chair?
30 seconds.
So in closing, we have number of applicable policies from mixed use, sustainable developments, utilizing smart growth policies, encourage new development, bottom, encourage development at higher densities where appropriate. I think it's clear, we've met, we're in substantial compliance with the plan, compatibility, your own chart, response to change conditions with a study, availability of facilities that's embedded in our specific plan, desired and pattern of growth, we're under the 2,000 cap, we're under the five unit per acre cap, and the North Valley areas findings, I think I went through each of those, and I'm happy to answer any questions for any finding, but I do believe legitimately, on behalf of Lifestyle Homes who've been here for 30 years and done development right, that we do meet the findings and would love to move this process forward. Thank you for the additional time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We'll start with our public comment.
Rob Pierce, followed by Wendy Baroli.
Hello, Commissioners, Madam Chair, thank you for your time. My name is Rob Pierce, and I want to take the next couple minutes to talk to you about the safety aspects of a possible substantial impact to the residents of Red Rock Road, which could possibly be avoided if we just wait for the infrastructure and the roads to fix this. I've lived in Red Rock since 92, and I've raised my family out there. I can't tell you how many times I've almost been in an accident with a bicyclist. My family and I have both almost hit bicyclists. That road is not wide enough for anybody, for a car, for a truck, and a bicycle. You got people going this way. If Mr. Listner is allowed to do this, the truck traffic is- If Mr. Listener is allowed to do this, the truck traffic is going to be horrendous, and it's going to put constraints on the road that's, that we don't want. Red Rock Road is our only viable option in and out of the subdivision. If there was a need for first responders out there and the road is closed for some reason, we would be unable to get to critical help that we need to possibly save a life. When we have multiple trucks using the, the road, that's even more of a concern. Right now, there is a sign posted where Reno City Property Ends and Washoe County Picks Up on Red Rock Road that says, "No trucks." I think it's there for a reason. I have reached out to RCC about this, and I've received a letter from them stating that the road is a medium priority, but there's no specific timeframe on when they're going to do this. I want to add that it's a $51.8 million project. So their $8 million is not going to help. The, the timeframe to do this is from 2022 to '26, but they're in no hurry to get it done. Mr. Listener already has approval to build. He doesn't need the zoning changes for this. We are asking you to disregard, he's asking you to disregard our safety concerns and allow him to put our lives in danger with this project. If you allow him to change the zoning to what he's requesting, I'm feeling, I feel that you're putting all of our lives in danger who live in the area. He doesn't need this change. He can sell his homes to the missing middle right now as it stands. They can buy them. Reno got sued for the lawsuit in Lemon Valley, I'm sure you guys are aware of that. Well, Silver, Silver Knolls Lake, Silver Lake is filling up, it is full, and it's taking away the embankments on Osage Road. So the same thing is happening out there, there just isn't a lawsuit yet. Please consider this when you're asked to approve or deny the additional homes or businesses that could be coming to the Red Rock area, and please don't put our lives in danger for this reckless disregard for our lives. The infrastructure's not there, and it won't be there for years to come. If you wait till RTC widens the road and the infrastructure's there, it would be a lot better option, viable option. This is the wrong time and the wrong place for this proposal. Please listen to our pleas, as now it could be considered a liability issue for Washoe County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Wendy Baroli, followed by Mark Thayer.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, once again. For the record, my name is Wendy Baroli, and I am speaking, asking you to support Silver Hills. And the reason I'm asking is because of all the reasons Garrett stated, but mostly that a planned community ensures a legal document that is followed throughout the process. That's why I'm actually here today testifying, and why I actually work with Lifestyle Homes. The growth is happening. And what I'm advocating for is a project that actually has checks and balances on it. I'm asking for a project that takes into the idea of precious resources. And as we all know, modern development is asking us to look at all those resources. Right now, we are hearing about complaints about safety, right now, today. The way that you mitigate those kinds of things is to have a taxpayer base. We already know that Washoe County does not have enough taxpayers to take care of the problems that we, that already exist. The reason we have fire safety issues, the reason that we have police safety issues, the reason that we have roads that aren't improved, the reasons that we have schools that are not finished, built, or added to, is because we don't have the large enough taxpayer base in our Washoe County. What this does is puts the onus on a project to come up with a way to build responsibly and build out for the next 15 to 20 years. What I'm asking you to do is think about the people who don't have a voice, who are going to be the future taxpayers, the people who are not sitting in the audience, who already have theirs. Thank you, and I hope you vote for the Silver Knolls project.
Thank you.
Mark Thayer, followed by Lou Christensen.
Good evening, members of the Washoe County Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Mark Thayer, representing the Truckee Meadows Firefighters Association, IFF Local 2487. I'm here to express support for the Silver Hills, Silver Hills Community Development. I do understand the concerns of the citizens who are opposed to development, but I'm also a realist. I understand that growth brings complications, such as additional traffic and increased demand on public services. However, growth is a byproduct of the economic prosperity that we're seeing in this region right now. As long as the region continues to attract new business, growth will continue. I believe it is in the best interest of the Planning Commission to allow development to occur in the county in a reasonable fashion. If it's denied, my likely outcome is that this piece of land will get annexed into the city of Reno. They'll certainly permit a far greater population density than this project is proposing. This will undoubtedly compound the congestion and demand for public service. The master plan amendment in front of you clearly states that the development will consist of private, single-family housing parcels that range in density from one unit per acre up to three units, with an average of 2.5. If you compare that to what is currently taking place within the city of Reno, you can see a dramatic difference. At Bella Vista Ranch, 5.7 to 10 units per acre. In Butler Ranch, 3 to 21 units per acre. Ranchera, 3.3 to 21.2 units per acre. Charlens, 15.5 units per acre. Damani Ranch, 12 to 18 units per acre. Caramella Ranch, 12 to 30 units per acre. So just contrast to what we're, we're looking at here, there's a much greater population density that's going to occur if this land moves on to the next step, which would be annexation to the city of Reno. Regarding the increase in demand for public services, I can only speak to the fire protection portion of it. Chief Moore's already stated that Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District can effectively handle the services of this area. And to clarify some statements that were made before, just to be certain, this, this area is served out of Station 44 on Silver Lake, it is not served out of Stations 9 or 10. So just to, just to clarify that statement, it is Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District that does serve this region. I thank you for your time, and the members of Truckee Meadows Firefighters Association look forward to serving the members of this community.
Thank you.
Lou Christensen, followed by Betty Schmidt.
Commissioners, Lou Christensen, longtime resident in Silver Knolls since 1990. First off, the fellow with the, the two people with the Fire Protection District give you a sense that the solution to providing fire protection is sort of imminent. Well, I think if you've read the newspapers around here for the last 20 or 25 years, you might say it's otherwise. That's, that's going to be a tough nut to crack, and I don't think it's as imminent as they might imply. Regardless of that, I just want to stress and reiterate my displeasure and disagreement with this project. That is consistent with what I've heard in numerous meetings of the Silver Knolls Community Organization. Nevada, North Valleys Citizen Advising Board was unanimous against this project more than once, and the Washoe County Planning Department does not support it. This is the developer's second bite at the apple. I don't think that's right. A lot of people expended a lot of time 10 years ago to come up with a plan for them to develop that property in a different way than they're asking to do it now. What they're asking for is, is for us to reconsider and make a new character management plan. I don't think you can make a, by making a character management plan, you change the character of the area. But what this plan would do would be to change the character of the area, and it wouldn't change it in a positive way. This board does what you do for the benefit of the community. There's lots of people, hundreds of people, thousands of people, who live out there, who drive the roads out there, who make up the community. This project doesn't help that community. Do the right thing, reject this project, and help the existing community.
Thank you.
Betty Schmidt, followed by Ray Lake.
Hello, I'm Betty Stuart Schmidt. I've been living out there for about 30 years, and I've been very comfortable with the master plan, and it's worked well. It's a lovely area to live in, and they had agreed on a certain density of growth and development, and actually, it could have gone forward by now. And imagine what's spent on the representatives that come, that speak very well, and the extra funds that Lifestyle is planning to put to make this a much larger proposition, instead of just going forward with what they have, and everyone would be quite happy, including our residents. And to enlarge Red Rock Road, as you've lived on it, you'll see that it's almost not enlargable. It's, the properties on both sides would be severely affected. And as far as density development, good heavens, if you drive down 395 between Golden Valley and Stead, there's huge development going on now, and more lands that are graded and ready to go. It looks like a lot of fourplexes that are very close to one another, you could probably stretch out your arms. We're not, and the growth of our city, the growth of the businesses, is not in this area. It's over off of I-80 in the economic development, and people will be moving in. Chances are Fernley, Yarrington, what have you, but we're really, we're five miles off the freeway, and it would, it wouldn't sustain the kind of lifestyle they'd like. It certainly will the original plan, which was agreed between our members and Mr. Listener the Elder. Anyway, thank you for listening to me, and good luck with your decision, and thank you.
Ray Lake, followed by Sean Shea.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Ray Lake. Until June 30th, I was Chair of the North Valleys CAB, and we heard this project at our June 10th meeting. I was originally concerned because I didn't see our minutes in the 991-page package that you had. So I wanted to make sure that I would, could come tonight and tell you firsthand that we did deny this project unanimously. We didn't feel that it was compatible with the surrounding development. We thought that it was exceeded the capacity of all of the resources, including roads, water, sewer, and it also exceeds the, the developer says that this does not exceed the 2,000 cap for the North Valleys area, but he's failing to include the over 400 people who live there today. And I think you need to take that into consideration. Also, they'll be importing more water from Tamoa. Right now, according to a study that was published by the County Community Services Department, Tamoa provides 3,000 acre feet per year to the North Valleys basins, as well as 11,000 acre feet per year from the Vidler Pipeline. There's some question as to whether that's, those numbers are accurate, but it doesn't really matter so much. The, the point is that that water comes into the basin and it never leaves. If, they're, they're talking about reusing the affluent, that they'll take a purple pipe from, from Reno Stead, and if they do that, that's fine, but they still, the water doesn't leave the basin, it still stays in the basement. So in conclusion, I guess I would like to say that you should probably reject both the master plan amendment and the regulatory zone amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Shea, followed by Roger Edwards.
My name is Sean Shea, I'm from Washoe County. I live out in this community, and I've owned the property for quite some time. You know, everything that has been said here, so I don't want to duplicate it, my only, one of my big concerns was it seems to me if, if you go ahead and approve this amendment, it just seems like that opens the door for any developer to come in and go, "Well, you, you amended this, so you have to amend this, or we'll just take this to court." And it just seems to me that there was, this was written, I mean, they agreed to this way back when, and now it's just a money issue for them. And they don't look at the community that's already out there. And those are just my concerns, plus the other ones that have been spoken to, so I'm against this. Thank you.
Well, good evening. For the two of you that don't know me, I'm an eight-year veteran of this board, regional, and currently sit as a temporary Chair of the North Valleys CAB. And I've heard this project for 10 years or so, I don't know, I've lost track. I thought it was all approved as 760 homes, that's reasonable, 1,800 is not. I have to admit that Mr. Gordon, this gets better with age, he almost had me convinced that tripling the amount of homes that we approved is a good idea. It's not. It's, you don't write a specific plan to cover changes you want to make to a neighborhood, and that's exactly what they're doing. Get it back to 760 homes, that's reasonable, that's low impact. There's a lot of other developments that are planned for that area that will fill the 2,000-plus, and this is just a bad idea at a bad time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marshall O'Reilly, followed by Russell Earl.
Thank you, my name is Marshall O'Reilly, and my wife and I have been 16-year residents in Silver Knolls. That's the only statistic I have for you, I won't bomb you with anything else. I don't have any speculation to give you, I don't have any shell games with terminology, but I do want to say that the reason that my wife and I bought our house out there was that because we wanted to live someplace that was zone, low density. And without only one exception of an absentee landowner, every other person that bought property out there feels the same way. And I want you to, I would hope that you would please disallow the master plan amendment case, and also the regulatory zoning amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Russell Earl, followed by Danny Kleas.
Good evening, Russell Earl, I'm a Silver Knolls resident, and these are my, my personal opinions, and these are not related to the Silver Knolls Community Organization anyway. First off, this plan is not compatible with the current zoning of 1:1, which is we have one acre per one house, but in actuality, we have 2.7 acres per dwelling, and I crunched the 595 parcels myself one night. And that does not include a 100-acre parcel and an 80-acre parcel with the Gabriel's with one of the larger parcels. Next, there's some corrections I'd like to make. There is military in the area, there's the Nevada Army Air National Guard that flies Chinooks, Blackhawks, and Lakota helicopters, I don't know if they were spoken to. Point out, the county sheriff says response times will increase, while levels of service will decrease if this project is done. I have some issues with Chief Moore, we don't always see eye to eye, but this is what I have, and I'm going to ruffle some feathers here. Chief Moore says, I believe he's optimistic in the fire service, should not be of a concern to us. Well, currently, we have a 12 to 14-minute response time, that is a concern to me. Eight minutes is maximum response time for adequate response, so we're way over that now. Okay, that may change down the line. I also want to say that he may have a skewed opinion of this, seeing that he told me in a meeting I had in his office approximately six weeks ago, that a new firehouse was going to be provided and built for him for free by Lifestyle Homes. I feel that's a quid pro quo, and may be skewing his opinion of the risk to the community out there. Justification for a new CMA is a benefit, this is talking about Lifestyle Homes, justification, and this was by their salesman that was talking this, I'm correcting some of his misstatements, justification for a new CMA to benefit themselves by selling it as a service to the neighborhood, it's not a service to us. He said they decreased the number. They started at 680 homes, went to 2,340, then they were down to 1,280, and now they're back up to 1,872. So in essence, they've tripled what they started with. And next, when are we letting the wolf create the hen house security plan? Since when is zoning written by the developer or the realtor? Of course, they believe in their project. Another thing, the average housing just went over 400,000, not 500,000 is what was stated to you. Costs will, taxpayers of Washoe County will foot over $42 million just in the Red Rock Road expansion to cover this new project. That's over the $8 million that they'll be kicking in, which is almost nothing. Dialogue, they said, we want to have a dialogue. They wouldn't have a dialogue with us. They would not call us back after Richard Klein was promised by their attorney that a dialogue would be held between the Silver Knolls Community Organization and the Gabriel family. There is no set time to widen Red Rock Road per RTC when I spoke with their engineer. It is on their books as a hoped plan, but there's no thing. Another- Another thing, property was annexed into Reno and then moved back into Washoe County. Currently, under the 2020 Reno Plan, it would not increase density, because that's not allowed. Stone Gate would not even gotten approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Kleas, followed by Peter Listener.
Danny Kleas, for the record. Listening to developers is like listening to a used car salesman. There's over 17,000 units being built in the North Valleys. That's on the books. That's already approved. Come on, we need more? Everybody knows the issues of a closed basin, but nobody wants to admit to it. You pump it in, you pump it out. Just a meeting, just the last two days down there at the City Hall. Guess what? Pump it in, you pump it out. Their sewer plant, it's way over capacity. Tamoa, downtown, we're in Sparks. At capacity. Pretty nice, huh? Where's all this water sewage going to go? City of Reno just said they're going to expand the Reno-Sted sewer plant. No more effluent water going to Swan Lake. You better find another place for it to go. Charlie Moore, boy oh boy. It was said to me, not by him, but by a Commissioner, this has to go through so Charlie Moore can split old Station 13 or 44, whatever it is now. Because then they're going to build a station in Silver Knowles, they're going to build a station in Lemon Valley, or take over the voluntary fire department station. Charlie Moore, we've had a house fire. 18 minutes to get there. 18 minutes. If we had one just a couple months ago, took him 16 minutes to get there. The one that was just a couple months ago, burnt the guy's backyard, burnt his neighbor's backyard, and put two people in the hospital. Because we can't rely on Trucking Meadows Fire. It's been brought to the Commissioners' attention. There's two rural areas left in the North Valleys. One is Silver Knowles, one is back in Lemon Valley. Leave them alone. We all moved out there, we all knew there wasn't building out there, we all knew there wasn't supermarkets out there. Because when I moved there in 1973, we had to go into town to get food. We had to go into town to get gas. We know better. Leave us alone.
Thank you. Peter Listener, followed by Lee Grzeszki.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, thanks very much. For the record, Peter Listener with Lifestyle Homes, I'm the applicant. I know that you have a very difficult and thankless job. Of course, we all want you to vote our way, both sides, and we all know that we believe we're right, so no matter what you do, you can never win. I'd like you to know that as a small family builder, the decision you make here impacts us harder than most. For example, we have hundreds of local employees and subcontractors that count on us to provide them steady work, provide steady work for them every day and every year. Your decision really will impact thousands of lives. Your decision is the difference between us having five to seven years worth of work, or 10 to 15 years of work. And that makes a huge difference in people's lives and their ability to plan their future. Many of these people I've been working with for 15, 20, and up to 30 years. I'd ask you to take a look at our history and the family, I'm sorry, take a look at our history and the good deeds we've done. We're honored to be local family builders, giving back to the community in so many ways. We're proud of our product and our neighborhoods, we're thankful to keep so many good people employed, and we're especially proud to help provide the American dream every time we give, excuse me, every time we give a new homeowner the keys to their home. We take care of our homeowners, and many of my employees live in the neighborhood with them. To make sure all that our customers are completely satisfied, I give out my cell number to anyone. It's 813-0046. Take a look at the areas where we've developed. It's easy to see that we've done a great job providing much-needed houses and actually improving those areas, including property values. Silver Hills will be another fantastic addition. I've been asked why I want to ruin the current residents' way of life. The answer is that of course I don't. I do want to keep our people working, that's the most important issue for me. I get asked those same residents, they want, why they want to put so many people out of work with their moratorium. It seems that local officials and big business entice companies and their employees to come to the area. Now it seems you must share in fixing the housing problem. We develop property based on filling a need. None of us build homes if there's no demand. We've always had a great relationship with the county, and I want that to continue, but of course, my main concern is keeping our doors open and keeping hundreds of people working for years to come. And I'd just like to say lastly, that there were lots of folks at these meetings that we had, that were accusing Roger of being bought and paid for in our pocket, and maybe they should come up and give him an apology, because clearly that is not the case. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Lee Grzeszki.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Lee Grzeszki. I represent the Silver Knowles Mutual Water Company. I did hear our name mentioned when I wandered in, sorry, it was a little bit late, so I don't know what the discussion was about us. But I can tell you, we have concerns that haven't been addressed to this point, so that is on the table. We have a wellhead that's going to be, there'd be homes and roads built over our recharge area. We do have concerns about security, we have a number of concerns, and certainly protecting our water system is high on our priority list. When we bought out in Silver Knowles 30 years ago, the zoning was 1 in 40, so we felt very comfortable that we weren't going to be overrun by city-type development. And then to watch the whole annex into the city on sort of sketchy grounds, you remember there was a peninsula thing that came up? And then to see this increased density is disturbing to us all. And I think we all knew land would be developed eventually, but we would like it done more sensibly, with a lower density. Speaking to the other person who talked about the 17,000 homes in development in Golden Valley, I can tell you just since January, my commute into town has increased by 15 minutes, mostly due to the backup at Golden Valley exit. Everybody's trying to get in to go to the schools, they back up, there's no light there. That backup goes out onto the freeway, forces all the Lemon Valley folks into the left-hand lane, and it stacks up the Sted. And that is a recent development with all of the new homes that have gone into the North Valleys just over the last few months. I can tell you current response times for the Sheriff's Department, I think 16 minutes is optimistic, 20 minutes is more realistic, and if it's a nuisance complaint, depending on when it is and what it is, there's no response. Currently, we're overrun by motorcycles and off-road vehicles. The Sheriff's Department has helped us out some, but the kids are smart, they know. They know that they can come by, they can drive by, dust our houses and run off, and that nobody's going to show up to hold them accountable. And there's a, and so they know they can get away with it. And the park is torn up by motorcycles, vandalism. There was a beautiful sprinkler system that the community got together and installed in trees, it was all destroyed by off-road vehicles years ago. I call it the park that time forgot. And you can tell, it's gone downhill. We have one of the safest communities in Reno, anywhere in this county, and we would really like to keep it that way. And to talk to this lady's point about the bigger tax base making everything better, we've all been, we're all big kids, we've heard about development for many years in this town, and it seems like the answer and the issue and the solution for problems is more people and more delay and longer response times. So, I question this development, I hope you do too.
Thank you. Charles Moore.
For the record, Charlie Moore, Fire Chief. Trucking Meadows Fire, I'm not here to advocate for the development or argue against it, I'm simply here to tell you Commissioners and the public how to respond to fire protection if the development goes forward. So, the area served by this station right here marked is 13. You see the orange is entirely the city of Reno, so our station over the years has been annexed entirely, surrounded by the city of Reno, so we have to pass through the city of Reno many miles to get to Lemon Valley and also to get to Silver Knowles. So the plan is, is to move 13 out of the city of Reno and move it up to 221, where our property exists. We'll reduce the response time to somewhere between one and two minutes. We'll also close one of the stations in the south that has, that answers, believe it or not, one half-call per day, so every other day it answers one call. It's underutilized, and our plan is to consolidate stations in that area and then take that station and move it to Lemon Valley. When will we do that? Well, when there's a need. The development might drive that need at some point. I have no quid pro quo with Mr. Listener. Mr. Listener has offered to provide a capital contribution at the station to the district so that we could build that station and make it a career, livable for career firefighters. That's all. That's a discussion that anybody in my staff might have about any kind of issue with how to serve, so there's, there's no, I take offense at that statement. So Mr. Listener has offered to pay for the additional infrastructure that we would need at that fire station. So, that's it. We take one station and split it into two, it improves the service levels. I could care less whether you approve or don't approve.
Thank you. No further public comment. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment before I close public comment and bring it back to the board for consideration? I'm closing the public comment and bringing it back to the board for questions of staff before we make a consideration, so I'm going to just start with Commissioner Doncheck and come down the line.
I don't have any at this point.
Commissioner Chesney, you've been busy writing, so.
Yeah, I've, I've got a, my assessment of this thing.
Who would you like to speak to first? County staff, or?
I'm going to make comments.
All right.
This development flies in the face of the entire North Valleys area plan, completely. And just because you pull it out of the area plan of the existing character management area and put a new coat of paint on it, you're still violating what the people that took the time to write the area plan wished for the rural character of the area. It's not going to provide affordable homes, that's a misnomer. The only affordable housing there is subsidized housing. It's just not conducive or compatible with the rural character area of the Silver Knowles area. It comes nowhere close to meeting the current best practices of developing infill first. It doesn't have the existing infrastructure to handle it, so that's another issue. And the expansion of Red Rock Road isn't even on the wish list until 2030, and you're looking at developing, what's your timeframe? I don't know. In 20 to 2022, or whatever it is. So, I can't, I can't make any of the findings, period. And so I cannot support the project at all.
Commissioner Bruce.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Barnes.
No questions.
I guess we'll move to consideration of a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesney.
Are we, are we going to do?
Combine?
Both of them to combine? Is that how we want to take this?
Or do we do on the first one and then, depending on the outcome?
It, it's my recommendation that you make two motions.
Okay. Two separate motions.
Okay. I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report, and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission deny master plan amendment case number W M P A 17-0010, being unable to make at least three of the six general findings of fact required in Washoe County Section 110-820-15, per N D, and all 12 findings required by the North Valleys area plan.
Madam Chair, I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Chesney and seconded by Commissioner Doncheck, she beat you by a half a second. Any comments? Commissioner Hran.
I'm going to support Mr. Chesney's recommendation or motion. I, you know, I think that clearly, I think staff did a very good job of presenting some of the issues. I have, as Commissioner Chesney said, I have a little struggle with just carving that out of the master plan and changing to a new plan in order to make it work. I am not, I don't believe the infrastructure is in place, and we can talk about plans all we want to. Plans, when it comes to infrastructure, I have never seen a plan that has met the plan, and certainly not early. So, I can't, as Commissioner Chesney has said, I can't make the necessary findings either.
Any other comments? All those in favor of denial of the master plan amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now a motion on the regulatory zone amendment.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesney.
Item 8A, Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number W R Z A 17-0005, Silver Hills. I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission deny Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number W R Z A 17-0005, being unable to make all of the following findings in accordance with Washoe County Code 110-821.15, and all eight findings required by Washoe County Code Section 110-442.55.10.
Madam Chair, I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Doncheck and seconded, I mean, moved by Commissioner Chesney and seconded by Commissioner Doncheck. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, if I could.
Yes, thank you. We're at 9A, is that correct?
Yes. Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing. Within 10 calendar days from the date the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or the Secretary of Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code, please call the Planning Commission's staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and application fee.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. We're now at item 9A for possible action and discussion. Do, is, do we have a staff report on this, or just, it's somewhere in here? Right here.
I believe you should have a staff report in your package.
Yes, we do. Is there any questions from Commissioners on the suggested for reassigning alternates to Commissioner Hran?
Madam Chair, I have some other activities that I'm heavily involved in, I would like to push down on the alternate list.
Want to go to the bottom?
Yeah.
That's my boy Phil.
Where the first shall be last. It's biblical, I think. It's biblical, I think.
Can we amend, do we need to amend this, or?
We're changing the order.
You can do whatever order you want. Your style to take action to determine what that order is going to be, that was a proposed list that's on there, you guys can move that around all you want.
Okay. So, Commissioner Hran is asked to be moved to fourth alternate, so that would move everybody as it stands up one. With that changes there a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesney.
I move to confirm the order of alternates as amended to move Commissioner Hran to fourth alternate, move everybody on up. I further move to direct the Planning Commission's secretary to transmit the confirmed list of alternates to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners and the Executive Director of the Trucking Meadows Planning Agency.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now at item 10, 10A, possible action and discussion related to electing officers, which would be the chair and vice chair. We need to open this up for nominations for chair.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hran.
As much as I regret having your term expire since you've done such a fine job, I think that you have mentored Mr. Chesney very well during this period of time, and I would nominate him to be the new chair.
Okay.
I second.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Lloyd and I were just noticing, on 9A, you need to open the floor for public comment.
Oh, I am so sorry. Yes, okay. Is there, we're back to 9A. Is there any public comment with regards to the order of Commissioners as alternates to regional planning?
No public comment.
Roger tried really hard.
We suspected that was the case, but we just wanted it on the record.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry for that error. Okay, now we're back to 10A. It was moved by Commissioner Hran and seconded by Commissioner Bruce to elect Commissioner Chesney as chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Don't you say a word. Motion carries unanimously. Now, open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I thought the new chair was to take that over.
Oh.
According to the rule. Wait a second.
I'll take over the next meeting.
It says, "The election, the chairship will take office immediately upon election and will officiate over the remainder of the elections and the meeting in progress."
That is correct.
Okay, Commissioner Care Chesney.
Do we have any nominations for the vice chair? I nominate Commissioner Doncheck for vice chair. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Too late.
There wasn't anybody opposed. Okay, that being out of the way, do we have any future agenda items? Anybody?
Mr. Lloyd does.
Mr. Edwards, do you?
No, are you asking me about 10B or 10C?
10B.
No, none from me. I don't know if Mr. Lloyd has any.
Okay, any requests for information from staff?
Oh. I'm not sure with this agenda staff, but I would like an updated report of approved not yet built or approved in process, so we can really look at the volumes that are out there, because we keep hearing these numbers thrown around, and sometimes the data is easy to find and sometimes it's not, but if we could get an approved not built yet built or approved in process, so we know where we are when we're looking at the impacts.
I think that is a great idea.
We can certainly provide that as well as a map to each of you, yes.
Now, can we, now, I'm not just talking Washoe County as a way we can reach out to Sparks and to Reno, so we have the.
That's regional.
The regional make sure.
And Regional has actually an excellent map on their web that provides all of that information, and I'll provide a link to all of you as well.
He wasn't ready for this tonight.
Mr. Hran, did you have a?
I had a, you know, I think that's a very useful request. I would think that maybe we ought to be receiving that quicker.
Well, at one point, we were receiving it kind of with our packets, but.
There was a request a while back, and we've been diligent in this request, with every tentative map to provide a number of the subdivisions, approved unbuilt subdivisions within a certain area, so, and, but we will certainly provide you with the comprehensive list of all subdivisions approved in Washoe County.
Because I know it's, excuse me, it's one thing to see the tentative map, but when we were looking at tonight, and they kept bringing up all the houses that are in play, sometimes it's hard to get a grasp on those numbers if I can't see where they're playing from.
Exactly, and actually, a comprehensive list of all the Reno projects in this case would be very beneficial.
Yes, thank you.
Good idea.
Okay, any more information for staff? Anybody? Okay, directors and legal counsel items, item 11.
11A.
Yeah.
Yeah, report on previous Planning Commission items. Have a couple to report on. At the July 9th County Commission meeting, the County Commission approved the amendment to the cargo containers, the code amendment, as well as the setback changes for non-conforming lots to make them compatible with minimum lot, or the lot sizes. Also have a couple of items I wanted to bring to your attention. We're going to ask for a special meeting of this Planning Commission in October, preferably late October. The date identified was Monday, October the 21st. Hopefully, you're all available. If not, please let me know. We wanted to hold a special meeting to discuss the Tahoe area plan, a possible adoption of the Tahoe area plan. It's been multiple years in the making, so we thought we wanted just one item on that agenda. If you, if you aren't aware of your calendars right now, please email us and let us know if that works, but we're looking at October the 21st, that's a Monday.
October 21st. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I will not be available. I will be out of state.
It's Monday, October 21st?
Correct.
Oh, good.
I'm good at this point.
Okay.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm seeing nods, yes, so we'll go ahead and schedule that.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm not, I'm not available. Sorry.
I have to double check. I've been traveling, and my calendar is a mess, so I have to go.
I'm definitely not available.
Okay, we, we'll send out a reminder email also. How about that? Finally, one last discussion topic, and I don't know how you all feel about this, but staff has made it clear, they really like the 5:30 start time, and was hoping that we could get some feedback from you all, if that's appropriate, or if you like to stick with the 6:30 time. I don't know if we want to have discussion, or if we even can, but maybe if you want to send me an email, or I can send you all an email and make that request.
I'll respond now. I am indifferent.
Okay.
It would be a conflict for me in some cases.
I would prefer the 6:00.
It could, why don't we, if you want, if you could respond individually to Trevor rather than amongst yourselves, and then, if you want to go beyond that, you can put it on an agenda as a possible change going forward, so, that's my recommendation.
Okay. I'll send out a follow-up email. Thank you.
11B, legal and information updates.
Nothing for tonight. I probably will have one or two at the next meeting. I'm kind of in the middle of a couple of things right now, but nothing for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any general public comment?
I'm Jan Bishop, retired teacher. I just want to thank you all for your hard work. I want to thank Roger for his objectiveness, and I promised some of my neighbors that I would at least say this, and all of the discussions that came up were thinking about adults and housing, and my comment was thousands of students, thousands of children, with parents working downtown for several hours after school, being home. So, I know you're not responsible for anything that the city is developing, but as we develop neighborhoods out there, I'd sure love to hear cultural things for kids, opportunities for kids. I mean, we're going to have wonderful schools. I've worked in those schools, and we're going to have activities after school, but, you know, cultural things in the North Valleys, many people, my friends downtown say, "I'm not coming out there. There's nothing going on out there." Well, as we're building these neighborhoods and communities, I'd sure like to hear what's in store for the kids. When they're older, job opportunities that will give them careers. You've got a beautiful airport out there. You've got aerospace and lots of STEM activities that could go on there. I just would like to hear, what are we going to do for the kids instead of, I had somebody tell me they can hop on a bus and go downtown. Mm-mm. That's not what we want for our kids out there. Right now, we've been able to raise kids that have opportunities with 4H, with farm animals, responsibilities that chores to do, and sometimes the four-wheeling, yes, it needs to be maybe, you know, with some respect for the neighbors that are out there, but we do have kids outside and active, and I, when we're all talking about parents and communities, I'd sure like to hear people start talking about what we're going to do for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Sean Shea.
Sean Shea from Washoe County. I just wanted to say, everybody I know thanks Roger for being, and no one's ever said he was, that I know that says he was bought by these guys, so I just wanted to put that on the record, because I thought that was pretty unfair for Listner to say that. And I just want to say thank you guys for going through the facts and voting through the facts, so, thank you.
Thank you.
No further public comment.
Any further public comment?
None.
I guess.
I would just, Commissioner Chivilochek, Mr. Chesney. I just want to thank my fellow Commissioners for the role I played as your chair, and I appreciate and appreciate all of you, and I'm leaving the Commission in good hands, and I will tutor him as needed.
But you're not leaving.
No, you're not.
Go on your horse and don't say that. Don't give us anything.
Sarah, I would really like to thank you for the fantastic job you've done the last two years. It's been a very, very pleasurable two years. Thank you. With that being said, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn. That I can do.
Do we have a say? Are we adjourned? We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.